On the show.
I'm gonna go ahead and open the meeting. I'm going to call the September twenty sixth meeting of the Woodburn Planning Commission to order. I'm Lisa Ellsworth, the Chair. Can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Corning.
Here.
Commissioner Bravo.
Here.
Vice Chair Hernandez May.
Here.
Cheryl's worth.
Here.
And I have excused absences from Commissioners Bartel and Berlin.
Okay. And Commissioner Lawson joins us. We will capture that. So would you please join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we do not have minutes in our packet tonight. Let's go ahead to business from the audience. There was nobody in person. Is there anyone online? I don't see anyone. So how about communications from staff? Any communications from staff?
I didn't receive anything for you, but as you know, we've been collecting a lot of testimony from the public and from an app, the applicant on the gas station proposal. And I think you were sent an email today, all of you. If you didn't see it, it should be, you should have it. And it's a link to a site where we've assembled all the testimony and I encourage you all to read through what's come in because it's pretty extensive. We won't have that meeting for another thirty days before you deliberate, but you're welcome to go in now and start looking at that information. That was all.
So tonight we have an open work session. There's no testimony that will be taken this evening and no decisions will be made at today's hearings, at today's hearings, so.
You don't need to do anything except.
I was gonna say, I don't think any of that. We're just gonna open that, go ahead and open up the hearing. Do we have this?
And and no hearing, just work session.
Okay.
Yeah, just a loose, yeah, just a discussion. You can ask questions as you go.
Yeah. I was curious because it said hearing on there. Nope. Okay.
Um, so Chris, I'm going to move to slideshow and share screen. And if you, nope, that didn't work. I'm going to share first.
Go on, on the meeting. And right up where it says leave right next to it or go down minimize. The actual.
That went right there. Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, now, Chris, can you please confirm?
I can.
Great. And if if anybody tries to join, I suppose I can't see that.
I'll see them on my.
Okay, thank you.
I can see the other side. Yeah.
Thanks for bearing with us. So, uh, Renata Weekly, I'm the Special Projects Director. I don't get to meet you at every meeting, but I'm happy to be here tonight. Um, the purpose of this first work session item is to kind of review the history of the work that the Planning Commission was involved in in two thousand and twenty-three related to the Economic Opportunity Analysis and buildable land inventory. And I'm going to review that. Um, and we'll talk about next steps. Now that the city has adopted those, the direction we received from the council. Um, the purpose of tonight is um, to prepare you for a public hearing that's been scheduled for October tenth. And you'll have some materials, a fairly hefty packet. There's a lot of findings we need to make with the UGB expansion. So Chris suggested we have a work session just to kind of get you ready. Um, we'll review the EOA and the BLI. I'm going to use those acronyms. Uh, we'll look at the Urban Reserve Area Lands. Um, according to Oregon Revised Statute one ninety-seven, those must serve sequentially as the first party lands whenever we're looking at a UGB expansion. And so we'll look at that in further detail. And as a reminder, as the Chair said, no actions required tonight. We're not taking public hearings. Um, this is just informational. So this is going to be some history for a lot of you and a lot of work that was involved in two thousand and twenty-three. Um, a buildable land inventory analyzes and quantifies the amount of vacant and partially vacant land. Just that. Um, big employment land currently available in the UGB. We do these with housing needs assessments, um, parks inventories, but i- in this case for tonight, we're just talking about employment land. That was the work that I was involved in in two thousand and twenty-three and related to our EOA, Economic Opportunity Analysis. The EOA analyzes and forecasts growth in the city's industrial and commercial districts, ensuring that a city has an adequate twenty-year supply of developable land for businesses and for jobs. So. It's it's like an economic forecast for the city. It identifies our employment needs and opportunities over the next twenty years and what we have in our current UGB. And essentially, it's a supply and demand analysis. And this is required under Oregon Revised Statute Gold Line. We've got, I think seventeen planning goals. Um, it it every city needs to do these. Every city needs to do housing needs assessments as well. And the next slide you've seen before. Um, the Economic Opportunity Analysis that circled, it's a component of the city's comprehensive plan. Every city in Oregon has a comprehensive plan. So this is, uh, we updated the EOA. It was adopted by the City Council in January two thousand and twenty-four by ordinance, but the work was completed in two thousand and twenty-three. So that is our most current Economic Opportunity Analysis. Just like an EOA, we have transportation system plans. We have parks master plans. In fact, the city's Parks Master Plan, I think, was just updated in two thousand and twenty-three. Um, Housing Needs Analysis, I think, is dates back to two thousand and nineteen. We're kind of on a hold right now by the state. They're developing new rules when it comes to housing needs assessments. So they said, don't update your H and A. We're creating new rules. You'll be subject to those. Chris will be able to tell you more about that when the time comes.
And just, uh, if you don't mind me interrupting real fast up. So the next item on the agenda, we're going to talk about an update to the Transportation System Plan, which is related to the work that uh, involves this UGB expansion. So that's why these are, we're talking about comprehensive plan amendments and tweaking these documents.
Yep. Thanks, Chris. Good point. Okay, so what components went into or required to go into an Economic Opportunity Analysis? We had Johnson Economics. The city hired a consultant. These are really detailed studies, a lot of data, number crunching. Uh, I was glad not to have to do it on my own. Uh, we had a technical advisory committee, I think Commissioner Corning. Did you serve?
Yeah, I did.
Uh, so we had a member of the Planning Commission, a member of the City Council, uh, residents or business owners served. We had the state send representatives. So economic trends, we look at our target industries. Target industries, what industries do we currently have? Who's providing jobs for us? But where do we want to be in twenty years? What are we missing? Host, a hospital or additional care was something that was identified in the EOA. Uh, that's a growing industry nationwide, a need, you know, as our, as our our population ages. So there's some aspirational goals that's in our targeted industries that's permitted. We look at our forecast for job growth and then where are those jobs going to go? Uh, we compare our land inventory and then ultimately we have findings and recommendations and that was all done previously. This is a slide from the adopted EOA. It's the, you know, uh, data from the Employment Department uh, says we in two thousand and twenty-three had about twelve thousand jobs uh, here in Woodburn. That's, that's fantastic. The um, it's covered employment, so it's data that the Employment Department provides to us. There are other self-employed or other businesses that aren't included under covered employment, but it's the data that we had. And then we use um, existing jobs and trends that we're seeing to forecast. What are our expectations for the next twenty years? And that analysis with assistance from the Technical Advisory Committee, uh, uh, Technical Advisory Committee. And then, you know, you as a planning commission recommended adoption of a two-point-three percent annual growth rate. That's about the rate we've been seeing since two thousand and ten. And so the city said, yeah, I mean, we're growing. We need to grow. We have a lot of housing, a lot of population growth. We need to make sure we're continuing to have jobs here, so we want to continue to see that trend.
What is our current population?
Twenty-nine-eight-hundred, is that about? Yeah.
And this. What does chart um, measure?
So different types. So this chart is current jobs that we have and it's the break. If I recall it, I'm sorry that I don't have a footnote.
So do the, so this all totals up at eleven thousand nine hundred and sixty?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And and it's the breakup by what's called the NICS code, N A I C S code. It's just a employment uh, classification of how the different industries are broken out. And I want, I actually, I'm gonna clarify if we looked at the numbers and if I could do math quicker. I think this is our employment growth, where the jobs will be. So it's, I let me, yeah. It's not where our current twelve thousand jobs are. It's where we're projected to go. In the EOA, which is available on the city's website, we also have a breakout of our current jobs under these codes as well. So you can look at what's our makeup right now. But it, when you look at these, this bar graph, you'll see that it, we're, we're gonna get a, a good jump in warehousing.
Mm-hmm.
Probably understand why, but the trends we were going to tend to grow in the industries that we're strong in. But if we, you know, the, the work that was done in twenty-three is is really interesting. And again, Johnson Economics, who this is, is what they do, is they run national and state numbers and compare them to Woodburn's jobs. They also identified for us, where are we lacking? You know, do, or do we have, uh, based on our population, are we short? On the short end of the stick, you know, can you say of like healthcare? Well, that's an opportunity. There's an opportunity there for Woodburn to market and push and say, look, you've got people here that can be served. So those are our targeted industries and and that work is all in the the EOA. Um, but yeah, this is where our growth should be going. This changes. I mean, you know, as as job needs and demands change, but this, it's just a forecast. So also as part of that work was this buildable land inventory and you, you've seen this map before, but it looks a little strange because we've removed public land. We've removed residential land. This is only commercial and industrial land or where jobs can be placed. And Chris and I and the Technical Advisory Group and we did several iterations of looking tax lot by tax lot on assumptions of where can jobs be accommodated? The state requires us to do that. My, you know, this, the two cases I like to use is, um, if you look at the do it best, the state would allow us to make an assumption. You'll see that the do it best site is marked red. That's built, like, there's no more room. They had a little bit of room there, right? They're a business that was here. They needed to increase their jobs or storage. They found room on that tight parcel to like add X number of square feet. I don't know how much it was, but that's a good uh, example of infill land, right? Um, but it's, it's hard to, and it can be expensive to infill on sites like that. So I'm really pleased they were able to make it work, probably something, I don't know if it came to the Planning Commission or if that was a minor review, but um, we look site by site. Where is there still land available within our current UGB to accommodate those sixty-eight-hundred jobs? So where you see green is vacant based on state kind of classifications. Yellow is redevelopable or there's some infill. And then you'll see on the Amazon and there's another speculative site that has a cross hatched pattern. Uh, we worked with the state on how to kind of use assumptions there. So while it's marked green, we did not say that's a vacant site. We, we knew that would be incorrect. We made assumptions that, um, because it's, those two properties were under construction but didn't have occupancy permits in the um, EOA, the, the consultant helped us with assumptions on best data that we had from Chris and from Amazon as an example. And I think it was fourteen hundred jobs at that time that we had an assumption could be accommodated on that site. So it just, it was a, a months of kind of back and forth of work. Um, but again, this is all work that was done and completed and we now have it adopted. So what did it result in? Um, some really interesting findings on this is we, we have some lots for commercial. We have sixty-nine lots, five acres in size or less, still available in our inventory to accommodate growth. Seventeen industrial sites that were five acres or less. Um, okay, so, so we've got some space in our UGB. But this was really interesting. We had no commercial sites larger than fi- uh, ten acres and no industrial sites larger than twenty acres. And I think that's significant because it's the city's comprehensive plan, goals and strategies for you, for most communities, to have a diversity of different types of jobs, industries and lot sizes and types to accommodate a diversity of job types and and industries. The state even recognizes the significance of large lot industrial is what they call it and how in demand that is and how you can accommodate a lot of jobs on large lot industrial. And yet Woodburn has zero. That's significant and it's could be a concern for the city because of course you want to have smaller businesses that can meet, you know, be created or infill on these smaller lots. That's great. Maybe less expensive, maybe then they don't need that much land. But you also need to have a variety of different types. So this was really telling. Um, and the state puts a lot of weight on large lot industrial, so much so that when Chris is talking about the Transportation System Plan update in the next work session item, the state gave us grant funding to update our TSB looking at some of this. And and Chris will speak about that more. So this was important. Um, as part of the work that was done in two thousand and twenty-three.
I've almost known buildable lands over five acres.
Yeah. Yep. Um, okay, so we looked at what's our demand for uh, twenty years as far as job need? Um, different types of employment types and and how many employees you fit by density per acre. It's all kind of high level, the stuff that this, the state kind of guides us on. How much land do we have left? And where are we? So we ended up with a deficit of a hundred and seven acres of commercial land, two hundred and seventy-three approximately of industrial land. Again, this is over twenty years. This is our twenty-year population growth. Um, but this is what was adopted in two thousand and twenty-three. And so we have a deficit. And then this slide, also the Planning Commission recommended to City Council, these co- we updated. You already had comprehensive plan, goals and strategies for economic development. These were just kind of refined or tweaked, but I want to read a little bit um, from this. The city shall provide an adequate supply of industrial sites to attract targeted firms. It is the policy of this city to provide for developments that whenever possible will allow residents of the city of Woodburn to work in Woodburn to encourage a healthy, diversified and sustainable job market within the city with a range of sizes, industries and pay scales. So the City Council with a goal and policy of having a diversity of house, uh, employment opportunities and industries here in Woodburn, then directed, um, Chris in the Planning Department, trying to go backwards, that's not working, sorry, um, to you know, once we have this identified deficit that was in our adopted EOA, okay, move forward and do something about it, is what the City Council did. So in March of two thousand and twenty-four, they adopted a resolution to direct Chris's department to initiate the process of this UGB expansion. So that happened in March of two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, Chris and I have worked with uh, the State Department of Land Conservation Development. We've worked with Marion County because this impacts the county. Our moving, moving our urban growth boundary impacts the county's comprehensive plan. Um, and we've done.
Can I jump in for one sec?
Yeah. Uh, yep.
Uh, this is just me. Uh, uh, this is a, a blunder on my part. I'm looking at that graphic and uh, hopefully someone else picked up that is not, that is not um, accurately indicating the urban reserve area. It's a little bit too high.
Yep.
So don't freak out.
I tried to fix that and I guess I didn't save it.
That's on me. That's all right. It's better on the next.
This one is correct.
That's more accurate. Sorry.
I missed.
It bothered me that I had it wrong.
Thank you, Chris. Um, okay, so, so council said, okay, we have a deficit for our next twenty years. What are we going to do about it? Well, the answer is that in two thousand and fifteen, when the city last amended their comprehensive plan, did a UGB expansion, you've probably made some changes to the comp plan, small zone changes, things like that. But this urban reserve area was designated and included in our comprehensive plan in two thousand and fifteen. It's decided. It's been done. We're not talking about where's our urban reserve going to go. This is in your current comprehensive plan. It's not in your urban growth boundary, but it is on your comprehensive plan map. And it's that gray area that's marked urban reserve. And as I mentioned earlier, the state says if doing an urban growth boundary expansion, there's a priority order of what types of lands you looked at, you look at urban reserve is the first priority. There's no other conversation about other lands. That's going to be the first. And the purpose of that is so that property owners are aware of what's coming. Right? They, they can plan for that. The city can help plan, our, our Public Works Department and, you know, Chris and looking at the TSP, our Public Works, when they're looking at water and and infrastructure, they've known since two thousand and fifteen, we better start planning to serve this area. Eventually, it will be part of our urban growth boundary. We don't know when. But so it, it, it's a, it's a nice system so that we can be kind of looking forward and planning. So the council said, we're, we don't have large lot industrial. This is um, a weighted and important need in Oregon and for Woodburn. Go fix this and bring that land into the urban growth boundary. Um, and so that's the work that we've been doing in two thousand and twenty-four. This is a aerial. Um, so I think the Planning Commission has been looking at some lands to the east of here, some residential development, I think, right? But this, uh, this land, again, since two thousand and fifteen, has been in our comprehensive plan map. These are the uh, lots identified by MAP and tax lot number and their acreage. Um, it comes to two hundred and thirty-seven acres, the sum of all of these lots. Um, I will note that in two thousand and twenty-three, when we were doing the Economic Opportunity Analysis and Buildable Land Inventory work, we informed all of the property owners that this process was starting. They know that we adopted the EOA and the Buildable Land Inventory. And on for September, I want to say September fourth is when I set notice to the Department of Land Conservation Development that we're kind of ready with the next steps. These property owners were also informed. We sent them courtesy letters. We're start, we're preparing to do the hearings before the Planning Commission City Council. Um, so, so we've tried to keep them, um, they, they've known since two thousand and fifteen that they're in the urban reserve area, but we've been having conversations with them and informing them along the way as well. Um, so again, here's that timeline. Council adopted the BLI and the EOA and the findings of that deficit in twenty, January two thousand and twenty-four. Um, in March was the resolution directing Chris's department to stop, start the process. September fourth, I sent notice to DLCD. That's Department of Land Conservation Development. That's a state rule that anytime we do this, we have to send them thirty-five days' notice. Send that courtesy notice to the uh, property owners and and adjacent property owners. Um, this week is when we're mailing and publishing notice in the uh, Woodburn Development Ordinance, like, you know, the school district, uh, the fire district, uh, the county, whoever we need to. Uh, that's happening this week. And so we thought it was a good idea to come and do work sessions with the City Council and Planning Commission. In case you start to hear comments or questions, there's signs on all of those properties now if you drive down Par Road, because that's a requirement of the city's legislative amendment hearing process. And what we've done with those notifications and we said October tenth is when the Planning Commission is going to hold their public hearing. So we wanted to kind of do a historical look back with you all, prepare you. We're not discussing any of the items I just reviewed with you on October tenth. That's all done and decided. The urban reserve area has been decided. The findings behind the deficit in employment, you know, that EOA work, that's all decided. You did, you make, you reviewed it. You held a public hearing. You've recommended to City Council. So we're not revisiting any of that. What you will be having a hearing on October tenth is are we complying with our comprehensive plan? And statewide planning goals? Um, yeah, do we meet the statewide planning goals in the process for a UGB expansion? And that's a different set of findings. So we just kind of wanted to go back and take a look. If you are ready to make a recommendation after the October tenth public hearing, we have tentatively scheduled the City Council public hearing for October twenty-eighth. If you're not ready, that's fine. Just like with any other legislative amendment, you can take your time. We're not under the hundred and twenty-day rule for these. Um, but.
Before we go any further, I have actually a question for Chris.
Okay.
Um, you've said several times in your presentation, if you drive by and look, you can see the signs. If you drive by and look, you can see X, Y, Z. Is there an issue if we drive by and look? Because usually we have to declare any ex parte or any site visits during a hearing.
So, uh, in this. Oh, sorry, wrong Chris. Pardon me.
Too many Chris's.
And by the way, one more Chris. Just to note, Chris Lassen I see showed up here about two minutes ago. Uh, can you hear us, Chris? I just wanted to officially put in the record.
Who, who did?
Chris Lassen.
Commissioner Lassen is online.
Oh, thank you.
Sure.
Um, so back to your question, Cheryl's worth. Uh, in the case of legislative hearings, um, the rules are slightly different. Um, so for a legislative hearing, um, there is no issue with you walk, driving by, seeing the signs, looking at the site. Um, you know, it's a legislative issue, so to a certain extent, we would want um, the decision makers to know what's going on, to have a good look at what's happening. Um, it's different than a quasi judicial hearing where everything that you decide needs to be decided based strictly on the record.
Thank you.
But, yep, it's totally different. You're legislating for the entire city, not a property specific, right? This is, this impacts the entire city. Um, but if folks come up to you in the street and say, I want to talk about this legislative amendment, it's best that you encourage them to come here, you know, and just so that everybody can hear their comments. And but that's. Um, okay, so, yep, we have set notice of October tenth. You'll have the materials a week in advance, at least a week in advance. I'll try to get things out sooner. Um, City Council, we have the tentative October twenty-eighth. After the, what I'm gonna, going to call the local hearing process, and if council does the first reading of the ordinance, because this impacts Marion County's borders or zoning or comp plans as well, we then have to go to the Marion County Board of Commissioners. So their staff is aware and the commissioners have been ma- made aware. We just don't have dates yet because we want to resolve the process locally. We want to have that first reading of the ordinance. But the county has assured us that they will schedule that hearing promptly. They're not gonna hold us for months because initially they were like, well, we'll just let us know when you have the first reading. And we're like, no, no, start to put it on your calendars because council wants us to get this resolved, you know, in a timely manner. And and we've been working on this since March. Um, so they're aware, the state's aware. After the county holds their hearing, they have to hold a hearing. I don't know if this is the correct. Basically, they consent. They, they say, yeah, no concerns. It will then come back to the City Council for the second reading of the ordinance. Every ordinance has two readings. So that's, we still have some dates out there that we're not kind of sure exactly when they're happening, but we're about halfway through the process, as you can see here. Uh, I've got some other notes and I'm sure either Chris's have additional comments for me. So just some notes. Um, if you look at the Economic Opportunity Analysis, you'll see, well, we had the hundred and seven acres of commercial land as a deficit. And even after the two hundred and thirty-seven acres of that urban reserve area, we will still have a deficit of industrial land that we need to meet. The state doesn't require us to meet all of that need at once. Council identified for the city. We have that urban reserve area. Nobody's questioning that that's our reserve. Let's get that addressed first. The rest of where our UGB will be expanded can be a time-consuming and expensive process. You have to do engineering work. There's soils analysis. There's a lot of work. So it's nice that we had at least. So it's nice that we had at least this urban reserve area. We knew that that's the first priority. Council will tell us when they want us to start that rest of the process. I assume it will be soon after completion of this. But we will likely have to hire or pay for some engineering work. I think Chris might be budgeting for that. There's just, it's more work. So we're we're phasing this is is how I say it. If approved, and we do the UGB expansion, that does not mean that these lands will develop immediately. These are in private ownership. We're just amending the comprehensive plan map to bring them into our UGB. We're not doing a zone change. We're not annexing the properties at this time. That's a separate land use application. And typically, I mean, a city can do an annex, they can initiate an annexation. I don't think that's what Woodburn typically does. But that's up to the property owners to say, we want to be annexed now. We're ready. And in addition, I don't, I don't know. I think you've handled some annexations recently as a planning commission, but you you might recall that one of the criteria for an annexation is that master planning of the property is shown to the city. How are you going to serve that land with infrastructure? And that will be up to the property owners or the applicant for the annexation to show you in the city council that it's ready to be served. So there's still, you know, just, just by amending the comprehensive plan or doing the UGB expansion, that doesn't mean we're going to see buildings on it tomorrow. There's a lot of work that still needs to be done. And it's, a lot of that is subject to the the property owners themselves being ready.
Good question. The way you phrase, at least for the area that we're waiting on and that we'll have to hire potential
Yes.
etc. You phrase it in a way where it seems like there could be something that comes up that it may then get disregarded. Is there any reason that that would happen or?
I I wouldn't say disregarded. So our need is identified. We've shown to the state, we know that we have a deficit of land. Where the rest of the UGB expansion will be is unknown. We have not spent time locally looking at that because we're not there yet. So they're kind of like how urban reserves are the first priority for you have to look at soils, engineering constraints. So the state realizes that even if you had the Willamette River running right next to your UGB and across that river, the soils were just the worst. And they want you to bring that land in because it's not being farmed. They realize that proposing a city to bridge and serve water and sewer under the Willamette River is a little ridiculous. So in, right, so where the rest of that need is going to go, I can't say. And that's, that's where there's some push and pull and we have to have solid findings to show why we're proposing one area because because basically everything around us is it is currently zoned exclusive farm use. It's all valuable and we have to be cautious and and careful and make sure that if we're expanding our UGB, that it's land that is ready to develop and can be served. It's, I I like to talk about there are cases of cities who had UGB expansions in the 80s and didn't do a lot of analysis. And now they realize why isn't that land being developed or being annexed? And it's come to find because of hills or slopes or it's hard to engineer, you know, so we we if this is to meet our future need, we want to make sure that it's going to be able to meet our future need. Does that?
Yeah, thank you.
I wouldn't say like, it's just, it's, we want to be cautious. Let's see here. That's all I have. So I'm gonna stop sharing if that's okay. And I will ask either Chris's if they have anything to add.
Thank you. Not at all. And I see the third Chris with us as well.
Any other question?
Nothing for me either. So.
Any other question? So as a reminder, October 10th, if there are any issues, you know, we're hoping, obviously, for for a quorum. Packets available in advance. You can always contact me or either of the Chris's when looking at the packet, if there are questions or you need clarification. And there's, we actually, Chris's team has a website, you know, on the city, on the planning website. We've got information up there too. That will all be available for you, but we we want to make sure the, so the EOA, the resolution from council back in March, all of that is on a little project website. Okay. For me.
Thank you.
Thanks, Renata. Would you, would you bring up my presentation there or do you want me to try to share it? You can just click through. It's pretty short.
I actually didn't know that you had a presentation.
Well, I did it very quickly.
Okay. Well, I'm happy to do that for you. How's that? Can you see that?
It looks just fine. It's a
Okay, so you tell me when
I was feeling a little sick. That green's a bit odd. I don't usually pick that weird shade. So just to kind of introduce this, everyone, this is again, just a work session. I do not have public hearing dates scheduled for this yet. We're a couple of months out from it. We'll talk, talk a little bit more about it later. But this is actually, we're calling this the SWAT. It's a TSP, Transportation System Plan Southwest Planting Subarea Plan. All right. So I know that's a mouthful, but essentially, we're creating a sort of a mini TSP to look at a bunch of different things particularly related to transportation issues in our southwest area. And it'll become evident why in a second. Go ahead and click through. So just as a little refresher for transportation system plans, I'll be super quick and the whole presentation will only take me a few minutes. Our transportation system plan is an element of our comprehensive plan, but and I really want to talk a little bit about why it's important and its real value. So it's, I mean, it's got sections and details on not just the vehicular system or the motor vehicle system. It goes over transit, pedestrian, bicycles, all these other, all these other elements. It also includes all the classifications, functional classifications, cross-sections for our streets, right? And also it has them for our sidewalks, right? Where do we want to have the extra wide sidewalk? What's the cross-section look like for arterial roads, all these different elements? And go on to the next slide. It shows various connections that we want to see happen throughout the community that are important. And these are all fed into this, these very, they really are complicated computer models that sort of send traffic around in different directions based on different alternatives. And the existing TSP that we have adopted, I think, in 2019, and we did a minor revision to it about a year and a half ago, includes all these elements. So and I want to just keep kind of bringing your attention to one piece of it because I think it's interesting and it's the part I'm in probably most often. This is like the detailed plan for where, and there's probably a dozen pages like this in the TSP. I'm just pulling out one. And it identifies where these sort of future road segments are supposed to be located, generally how much it's going to cost, whether it's an intersection, that's what most of these are, and some of these are sort of individual roads. Go ahead and click. So you can see, I think I highlighted, there's a little blow up in the southwest corner because that's where a lot of activity is happening. You can see, go ahead and click again. I've highlighted on there two particular projects that the TSP called out. One's the extension of Stacy Allison to the south down to where a future Par Road could possibly extend. And the other is the extension of Evergreen further south. So if you're looking where that, right in between those two boxes is where that spec industrial property is. And Par Road, the curve is just below that R21 box. That's where the bend is. It brings you south. So I I mentioned this because this TSP is kind of forward-looking and it says that connection, these two connections and all the other ones you see in orange and blue are really important. So then we have our engineering team go and look at detail of what kind of roads it's going to be. How's that connection going to happen? And they put very broad, they call planning level cost estimates to it. Go ahead and click the button. So on another page in the TSP, you have, say, R21, R22 I've highlighted. Those are the two projects I just talked about. And there's probably 90 different projects in the TSP. This is just who I called out. It calls them out as a new roadway that need to be constructed because there's nothing ever built today. It's one, the Evergreen one extended it down to Par Road, called that as a high priority and put an estimate of about, what, $4.7 million on it? That's what it would cost to extend Par Road from that current end at Paradise Park or Paradise Farms, whatever that's called right there, all the way down to Par Road. Now, we put that in our TSP and then we have separately a whole funding plan that we collect money for that we, and you see at the bottom of that page I have there, we have these projects we call high priority costs, right? Those are high priority projects that we established. That Evergreen Road was one of those high priority projects. And that puts it on what we call our fiscally constrained list. This is really important because when we ultimately collect things like SDCs for transportation system funds, we can apply those funds to some of these capacity building extensions or roadways. So the question I get asked probably once a week is, what are you doing with all that money you collect in SDCs? Because we collect a lot of money and we have recently because we've had a lot of development in transportation SDCs. It goes towards these previously identified high priority projects in our TSP. One of them, as an example, is that Evergreen Road. Now, some of you are probably thinking, wait a minute, we didn't build that. We had spec development build probably three quarters of that project. So go back. Would you mind rolling up one for me, Renata? What's interesting is if you look at a lot of these road segments in these projects, the majority of these are done by private development. One of the priorities we have here at the city is that we want private development to pay for the improvements to the greatest extent we can make them pay under the law. And that that R21 project, that extension Evergreen is a good example. It benefited the applicant as much as it benefited us. Now, at some point in time, these app, these projects get SDC credits for building more capacity of roadway. Or we have this exact same plan for those who were playing the master, the water master plan, et cetera. When an applicant and developer builds a little bit more, they're entitled to get certain credits back for it. In other words, they, if that, if that spec project has to pay, say, I don't know, a $1.5 million in SDCs, they would get that money credited back. They wouldn't have to pay them because they're putting in, say, $3.5 million improvement along Evergreen. Oh, I can hear myself echoing. Is that right there? I think, Chris, you may have
Better now.
Like a new one. Okay. So I just, I give that example because that's where this project, the southwest project, where we're going to look at this new area is going to be leading us. Go ahead forward. I just wanted to jump back for a second about, look at what the TSP does and why it's important. So as you know, we've got tons of activity going on around town, certainly since 2019 when that TSP was finished. And those TSP numbers are probably from 18 months earlier, around late 2017, 2018. I can see you. Okay. Who's that? Can you all see the screen? Okay?
I'm gonna try muting just one second, the participants, so we don't get the echo. And then I'll unmute them.
Here we go.
All right. Am I okay?
Yes.
Can you hear me all right? Oh, great. So this brings us down to, a lot's been happening since that last TSP. Now, it is too soon and way too expensive and time-consuming to redo the entire transportation system plan. That takes a couple of years. So we decided to jump in, go ahead and click on just the the sort of southwest area where a lot of activity is going on. As you just heard about, we're looking to grab this new UGB area, this urban reserve it's called out for. So one of the big things that we can do with this subarea is we can now plug into the TSP what kind, what the improvements would happen down there? If these, if these lots are eventually developed, how are they going to be served from a transportation standpoint? What kind of road segments, intersection improvements, we need to see safety improvements, all those various elements. And on top of that, we have a lot going on right now just in the southwest area. You know, our TSP didn't contemplate Amazon or the roundabout. And that's fine to be on that. So just to give you an example of kind of ongoing and current projects are recently
Chris, can I stop you for a second? Is there another person on the line that can mute themselves? We're getting some echo.
Oh, yeah, I see a guest. Oh. I can walk in there if it's a problem. Is that better?
Okay, try again.
Just me? Sound okay?
Yes.
Great. I'm just going to quickly walk around. So, you know, if you just started looking in the, I'm going to start around 12 o'clock noon. You've got the new Chick-fil-A going in. We've got improvements at Unites over there on the right side. Where I have dollar signs, that's areas where we've been collecting money from individual projects that we're keeping in a pot to help fund projects and improvements at those intersections, say, Evergreen, Stacy Allison, Hayes, we even have money that's going more into the interchange to pay for improvements to the signal improvements that we have there. We've got pedestrian improvements going on around 3 o'clock that you see on the backside of Evergreen Road. Obviously, that, what we used to call, or still call Stub Road that connects to Harvard, that's a brand new connection. And that Evergreen Road, that's going to be opened up honestly in about, I want to say, the next month, you're going to be able to connect Ever, drive down Evergreen and go right to Par Road. And which of course can lead you out the, to the west, all the way out to Beaufort and and provide this sort of additional circulation pattern. All of those, those improvements were never looked at under the old TSP. So we really need to do this, this computer modeling and plug in all the development. Now that we know what it looks like, it changes peak hour trips on the roadways. Amazon itself changed the peak hour that was, that we've been using up on Newburgh Highway, interestingly enough, just because it's so many peak hour trips at one time. It sort of moved the whole peak hour, a whole 30 minutes in one direction. And all these connections and improvements haven't been evaluated. And what, one of the, one of the reasons it's really important is as we're looking to develop that more areas of the southwest area, whether it's the remainder of that Amazon property, that UGB area that Renata is working on bringing in, which is of course coming in as Swer large lot industrial parcels, or the rest of the industrial, of the residential areas that you see just east of Evergreen. As these come in, we want to know exactly what kind of improvements we need to make that might be different from the current TSP. I frankly, I'm not that confident that the current TSP is as accurate as it should be in this particular area. And that's why we went out and started doing this project. We've been at it actually for a long time because ODOT has held us up a little bit more than we were anticipating. But we're moving forward. Renata got us a fantastic grant from Business Oregon because there's an economic development component to this. So we're really pleased. Go ahead forward. I'm just going to run through the objectives and I'm going to run through some of the kind of big hits as to what what elements this is going to include. So that's what this is. This TSP subarea, this is basically an amendment and a modification to our existing TSP to include this new, this new section with some new individual plans and components or and projects and components, pardon me, is going to account for recent and future development, everything going on out there, specifically the system impacts on those developments, including that Swer area, which is our industrial area, and picking up the rest of that urban reserve, those UGBs when they come in. Go ahead. You can click for it. So some of the items under the scope of work, it's going to do this new modeling runs for these future conditions. It looks out 20 years. That's the requirement under the state. And it's going to play these different scenarios. It's going to say, if you build this segment and this component, what will the impacts be in the system? And if you put all your money into X, what would the, what would the impacts be on the system then? And it tries to give us sort of the most impactful improvements that we can make. If that means a new roundabout at one section is going to be most impactful, we know to start with that and maybe phase them forwards. So these modeling runs that they're working on, these computer runs that they do, are being done under a lot of different scenarios. And I'll talk a little bit about them. So some of these alternatives, this is the classic no build. It's not really a no build. It says if we build out our current test TSP, the way it's currently allocated for those high priority projects, what would the impacts be on the system if the rest of that UGB got built out? It looks at what it means It looks at what it means to realign par. You might recall, we have some issues on the existing Par Road connection to Beaufort. It's, we have some short term problems we need to solve in terms of safety issues we have there. But the real goal, and I'll talk about it in a second, is to drop Par Road further to the south and create a much more robust and safer connection to Beaufort Road. We're going to talk about, I'm going to show you where this south arterial is. A lot of you have heard me say this before, that as far as I'm concerned, the most important transportation project the city can undertake over the next twenty years is to complete that south arterial. I'm going to show in a second the goal, and this frankly, this has been in the city's T S P for, I want to say, at least twenty five years, maybe more, I didn't look any further back. It's the idea that there needs to be an alternate sort of beltway route to the south of the city that will allow traffic to not utilize two fourteen, two nineteen and two eleven to get through town. Instead of pushing all that surrounding traffic right through the middle of, and the heart of Settle, of Settle Meyer and up the new Evergreen and up the new Harvard and bringing it down Boon's Ferry, we'd need to find some alternative route for that extra traffic. It was critically important. So that's South Arterial, this dream of a major roadway that kind of belts around the bottom of the cities, been on the books. I mean, as far back as I can look. And we're starting to see that come together. And some of those elements get built. The other part that we're including in this plan, this sub area plan is we're trying to figure out, I know the second most, the most common question I get around town is when are we going to get another access or interchange at I five? And my answer is always, it's probably not going to be while I'm still working here, but I'll certainly try. So what we've asked our engineer and we have our traffic consultant, who's Kittleson Associates, to look at is what, maybe we could potentially get a limited I five access. And I have a picture of what that, sort of how that's going to work out. And that's going to be plugged into the model too. So at the end of the day, it'll say, well, what happens if the city found the money and spent the cash to realign par, to complete the South Arterial, to make the connections, to get a new limited access on I five? What would those impacts be on the rest of these intersections and roadway segments that we currently have? Other parts to this are identifying the existing safety capacity issues. And it's going to have alternatives, you know, here's do X instead of Y, we'll be looking at those things. And it's really important that we get these planning level cost estimates for what the improvements are. Just like you saw in the existing T S P, we're going to have these generally what it would cost to make those improvements. And again, that really helps because as private development comes in, now I can say, this is the most impactful project that you can, or transportation project that you can assist us with. And here's how much money we already assumed it's going to cost, so now you can pay your fair share based off of it. I don't have really good numbers right now in the southwest area and I want to have those. That's what this is going to give me and the city going forward. It's going to have some funding strategies for the new Swer area. A lot of you know, we have a separate transportation system development charge just around our interchange. Right? And you might recall that the, the city has been sort of paying itself back from the properties out there that were vacant when the interchange got expanded. And all those vacant properties that are, that are around the interchange pay an additional little fee on top of their S D C that comes to us. And that money is sort of reimbursing us for the investments the city made and contributed to the interchange. And this isn't a far fetched idea. I think of it sort of like, I call it sort of like an improvement district. If the city is going to go in and make some of these improvements, we want to be reimbursed by the property owners who benefit the most from it. We can legally do that and it's a tricky exercise. And one of the things we're asked our consultant to do is come up with some funding strategies for how we might come up with sort of a fair share allotment for some of these new properties that are coming online and these existing vacant properties. Again, we're going to be the ones who will benefit the most from it. They should probably pay a little bit more to make sure that it happens. We've also looking at modifying our truck route. It says truck lane, that's incorrect. We're, we're considering moving our truck lane off of Evergreen and swinging it around to Stacy Allison. And there might be some good reasons for that. This is, we want to see the modeling to make sure what the numbers really come up with. Ultimately, it's going to be in a brand new project list. And that's going to lead to this new transportation system development charge project list. So once a project's been identified, considered important, the city council recognizes, puts it on this official list, we can spend transportation dollars on it. I know that's a little complicated and I can walk through more of those details if you like. But at the end of the day, if we don't have a project identified in a master plan and we don't recognize it in one of our these official C I P lists, like a capital improvement project list or an urban renewal area project list, we can't allocate money that we collect from developers towards those projects. So we want to make sure we do that. I only have a couple of slides left. So I've, again, this is, yes.
This Renata, sorry. Do you have the ability to mute any of the viewers excluding yourself? I, I don't, and we're getting some echo. It comes and goes, but if you have the control to do that, would you please do that? And then we'll unmute folks after.
I don't think I do, I'm clicking through. I'm going to stare at Chris if he does. Oh, someone did it. All right, does that sound okay? Can you all hear me?
Uh, yes, okay, let's keep going, thanks.
Oh, yeah. Oh, great. So just to give you an idea of some of the projects and elements to look at here, I'll just kind of start on the, on the top and work my way down. These sort of red dots are, these are, these are intersections and interchanges where we have some current safety and capacity issues. And we'd like to know exactly what it's going to cost to make necessary improvements here. And they might be phased improvements, right? It might be doing something, it might be some kind of modified mini roundabout that turns into ultimately a traffic light or stop signs at some other intersections that turn into signals. But that's the kind of information we're going to have. You see Evergreen connecting all the way to the south and the, the long red horizontal line at the bottom going east to west, that's that future arterial. That is going to run some point in the future, knock on wood, from Beaufort Road all the way out to ninety nine. We've already, so you probably know, some of you have been on the, on the P C for a while or on the council. We've been picking up elements of that arterial over time. It's the sort of the south end of Boon's, of Boon's Crossing. You can see on the southeast corner of that graphic I have up there. That's sort of three quarters of that arterial built. And when the other half comes in on the south side of it, they'll build the other component. The Brown Street development just east of what you see on this map has built out the full arterial on their property. And again, the only way to do this is in segments. And as it happens, that will get built out. And again, the idea is that's going to draw a lot of traffic to the south. And if you keep looking over to the west side and the lower west, lower, sorry, southwest corner of that graphic, you'll see a new X, that's a new intersection that we're going to have to install somewhere south of I five where Par Road, future Par Road, which is going to be our south arterial, is going to connect with Beaufort Road. You need to think of that as a pretty major intersection. We're trying to funnel as much traffic down to those major roads as we can to take them off these other local streets. And that's, those are the kind of projects that this individual, this new T S P sub area is going to look at. I drew in here in yellow. Again, that's because I tried to do it on PowerPoint, it's not the best. In yellow, you see this is the idea that where there's room and what we're going to put into the sub area plan is what a limited interchange would look like getting onto five. So going north on Beaufort Road, you would be able to jump on I five southbound with a little loop there where there's a little bit of right of way. There's a little bit of vacant land at the bottom of the Amazon site. And what would that entail? These limited accesses onto the freeway are much, much, much easier to get than a full blown cloverleaf. The other component is that yellow area in the south. We're also going to be including in here the, and look at what would happen if the city were able to get an exit only off northbound I five that could connect here into where this, essentially this new connection, new intersection would be at Beaufort and Par. That's what those two yellow indicators are. You can go to the next one, just to give you an idea what some of these projects are and the things they're looking at. And again, when it's finished, it's going to mean that area you see in red, generally speaking, is going to be modified in our existing T S P with new projects, new cost estimates based on the new modeling that we're going to be doing. It's going to include safety improvements, what kind of pedestrian improvements seem to be made in these areas. So we're pretty excited about it. Go to the next one. That's really it. So we've been having technical advisory committee meetings. These are committee meetings with sort of the engineering folks. Mainly, we're working with ODOT and the county because they're the players we have to work through. And we, of course, we have city staff on those as well. At the end of the day, we're, we're going to wind up doing ultimately a comprehensive plan amendment because that's what a transportation system plan is. You saw that big list of all the supplemental documents in our comprehensive plan. One of them's a T S P. And in order to modify the T S P, we have to go through the, the land use amendment, this comprehensive plan land use amendment process. So that's going to mean coming to the plan and commission. I'm thinking maybe it gets here in December. We'll see how it goes. We're, we're getting slowed down a lot by ODOT and their requirements. But in any case, it'll ultimately have to come to you for review, get a public hearing. You, you'll be making recommendations for the city council to ultimately adopt it, to be amended into a T S P. And then we'll have a brand new project list of improvements. That's about it. So it's again, something I'm, I'm excited about. We kind of, this sort of came out of the blue. It's not like this was scheduled to happen, but I think that at least I can tell you, I advocated for this pretty strongly at the council level because I felt like we were getting inundated with development, particularly in the southwest. And I did not have a good feel for, I did not have a good feel that the existing T S P was projecting the appropriate traffic and anticipating the improvements that we might want to see out there. I really thought it was worth taking another look at.
Thanks, Chris. So folks are muted if, I don't know if the commissioner has any questions or comments. I can unmute you if you don't know how to do that.
I had a question, Chris, on that Evergreen by spec. I drive by there, it looks super narrow. Is that, I mean, is that supposed to be that narrow? It just looks super narrow, like I feel like you could fit one car, it looks like, is that by design or?
It is by design. So if, I don't think, I don't, I don't have a slide for it, I'm sorry. But I, so I want you to try to visualize the fact that the east side of where that, so do we all know what we're talking about? So where Evergreen extends south. On the east side of where that future extension will be is unincorporated county property, right? So spec can only build on property that they have. So when they came in, they gave up, I'm going to guess sixty feet of right of way for what's ultimately probably a seventy four foot right of way. And then the idea is they can't go any further. We can't build, they can't grab land off of their own property. So we, we will, when they're done, there's going to be two lanes of traffic, all of the improvements that are required on their half. And then when the other side of the road is built, they'll finish that other portion, that other sort of, I want to say, I think it's about eighteen feet or so on the east side. This is pretty common where this happens on the south arterial as well. When an individual property owner is stuck with, you know, a seventy four foot right of way that the city's anticipating in the future, they say, well, I'm willing to give up sixty feet of that, right? And I'll do all the improvements on my half. And I'll even build all the lanes, all the way out to the curb on the other side, but I, I'm not going any further. Legally, we can't really make them build improvements on the other side of the road. So the short, the long, short answer is that is by design. And when the other side's done, it'll be a full blown improvement. We just get it.
So Chris, meaning the road is not fully constructed yet. It is, it does look narrow, but that's not the full build out. The city required what we could. But, but Chris, is that correct to say that the road is not fully built out?
That, that's absolutely correct. We, when the other half of Evergreen's built out, that property owner will give up their portion of right of way and build their portion of the frontage improvements. And it'll be wider. But it is, that's a full, that's a full collector that runs through there. So yeah, we're excited, but no timeframe yet. It has stalled a bit. I was a little disappointed. I was, I was actually hoping this would finish before we got our U G B process in. But I think the U G B may finish first.
Any other questions? The next thing on my list says decisions, but I believe that we stated at the beginning of this that no decisions would be made.
Yeah, we're definitely finished on our work.
Good job, Chris. A good job for you too. Okay. Well, if we don't have any other questions, I'm going to go ahead and close this work session. And is there any business from the commission? Commissioner Lassen, did you have anything?
Oh, now you're muted, Chris.
He's calling in, so you'll have to run from the bottom.
All right, how about any updates from staff? I think we've already talked about.
I was.
Can you talk a little bit about what happened at the council meeting on Monday?
Renata, would you mind bringing up my same slideshow you just had? I put a slide at the very end that I think will be helpful while she's up there. So Monday night, we had an urban renewal agency meeting and a city council meeting. And at the urban renewal agency meeting, they formally, I'm going to read it to get it right, authorized the purchase, authorized the purchase. Essentially, it says that the city administrator can sign a purchase sale agreement for a property at ten thirty Young Street. And just give her a second and bring it up. It's the old Young Street market. Hold on, I'm getting a hard echo. I'm afraid to speak.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, good deal. If you don't mind bringing that up, I just had a picture of the actual site. It's the old Young Street market, the one that burned down. Go to the very end, it's one off the last slide. I just put it on the very bottom for us.
That is your last slide.
No, go, go up. There you go.
There we go.
So that's the, so if you're looking at, that's where the old Young Street market was. See Cleveland Streets on the bottom, north on the top of this screen. Young Street ninety nine is just off the screen on the right. This was a project that the planning commission approved probably two years ago, I want to say. It's about right, maybe a year and a half ago.
Recently, yeah.
It was like maybe January or February because it was.
Yeah, it's recent.
My third or fourth meeting.
Oh, good, good. So it was an authorization for the urban renewal, urban old district to go ahead, purchase this property. It's right, it's currently being marketed for residential development. The owner of that property, the developer, you've got it set up, put it immediately flipped and put it on the market. So it's been, it's been out there and for sale. It's approved for ninety four total units. Those four kind of walk up apartment buildings is what he got it approved for. It's adjacent to the tracks, but it has a couple of nice sort of elements that I, I know the P C worked hard to ensure we were going to get. There's a nice walking trail, there's a big, big wide park, sort of linear park on the west side of the property separating from that little industrial fruit freezer plant, I can't think of the name of, yeah, fruit packing plant. The price for it's going to be one point three million dollars. And with that, the city's going to be picking up all the development plans, approvals, surveys, drawings, you know, architectural, engineering, et cetera. A lot of work's already been done on it. Aside from just the entitlement, they've actually done all the, the work for the civil improvements along Young Street, for all the utilities, et cetera. So they spent a long, spent a long time negotiating this. And we looked at a few other properties as well, but this is the one that looked like the best one for us. And the real purpose of it is to take this property and flip it to a affordable home builder. You know, we're, we're not in the house building business at the city. But I think it's, it's, it's really been a goal for a long time for the city to try to get more affordable housing. And one of the biggest problems that these affordable home builders have is they can't get the land. It's just, they just get cost out of it. The market's just been so hot and on fire. They can't pick up these properties. So we feel pretty confident that if we can acquire this property, again, So we feel pretty confident that if we can acquire this property, again, we're getting close, it's not final yet. But if we can pick it up, the idea is we're going to flip this off to an affordable home builder, hand it off to them. Um, let them do the good work that they do. We're talking closely with F H D C, I can't guarantee, could be somebody else, but we've worked with the Farmworker Housing Development Corp before. They're the ones who did the Colonial Only Dodd project. Um, and of course, uh, Nueva Manasera, the one, the last Baranta, I think it's called right over here across the street. They've done a few others in town, um, they've been a really good, did I get it wrong? I'm sorry. Um, been a good partner for us. Um, and it's the, it's them or that type of developer to come into town, provide some affordable housing for our community. Uh, again, in an area where we've got transit, there's a lot of commercial around it, feels like a pretty good location. That was just kind of a quick summary of, of it. But if you have questions, I, I know a little more about it. Um, I've, I've been work involved in an ancillary way. Yes, it's funny, it's I, when I first came to the city about eight, seven, seven and a half years ago. Uh, the city actually sold off the property. Uh, that now has Colonial Only Dodd on it over off of Park. Um, that, I know a lot of you know, that used to be an old like public works facility at the city. Uh, that the city owned, didn't use it anymore, they kind of flipped it, made it a surplus property, put it on the market. Essentially cut a deal for F H D C, right? They could have probably made more money on it. And I was at very first council meeting I attended, just viewing before I came to the job. Uh, that was a meeting where they were kind of extending that contract, trying to work with them um to make that deal and that development more palatable. Um, I was really, really, honestly, it's one of the reasons I took the job. I was so, so proud of what the, the council was doing. It takes a lot, very few cities, particularly cities of this size, go out of their way to go spend, you know, a little under two million dollars to go buy a piece of property. As part of their urban renewal area agency and uh flip it to uh allow more affordable housing in their town. Um, it's pretty impressive. It, we did it before for that project, a little bit different on a piece that we already owned. But again, we could have probably made more money um at the time and flipped it to someone else. Uh, but made a sort of conscious decision and recognized the importance of providing more affordable housing for the community. This is another good example of that. There aren't that many in town, it's hard to find those designated affordable sites. So just an interesting project, I'm really happy to be involved with it. Um, I'll let you know more as it comes forward. And the only other thing I was going to just mention very briefly is that uh moving ahead on ten ten. You're going to have the public hearing on the U G B that Renata just spoke about. And on ten twenty four, October twenty fourth is, that's a very important meeting. You were going to be deliberating and voting on the gas station condition of use approval. That's when it's formally coming back. And for those of you might have missed at the beginning. Uh, I was just giving everyone a reminder that I sent in an email with a link to all the information we've received and testimony since that public hearing that we had, I guess thirty days ago now. Um, and I encourage you all to go online and look at that. Um, some, some of it's long, a lot of it's detailed. There's a, a very, there's a very detailed, long response from the applicant to some of the issues that were raised at the hearing. And again, if they, take your time reading them and I'm sure there'll be more information coming out going forward. That was all I had.
Uh, Chair Ellsworth, I have an update, if that's okay. Um, and I'll be brief, um, but if. You may have seen in the news media about the Emerald Ash Bor. It's been found in Woodburn, it's a beetle and it's destructive to ash trees. So a couple of years ago, it was found in Forest Grove. Um, we have been in contact with Department of Agriculture and Department of Forestry who've reached out to us. And they're working with the city. There's been a couple of news articles and I, I've seen it on the local news as well. Um, the mayor and the city have requested Department of Agriculture to come and give a presentation to the city council. Tentatively October fourteenth, that's always recorded, so that's something you can view. Um, it's a concern because it has the potential to basically destroy ash trees in our region. And we're unfortunately, one of the areas the beetle's been found. Being that the planning commission worked, you know, very hard on the tree permits and hazardous trees. Chris will keep you informed of what we're learning. Um, this isn't a Woodburn problem or what we created, right? It's a statewide issue, but the state is engaging with us because they want to help us do education and outreach and help in planning and how to address that. So you may be hearing from residents or hearing news releases. Um, so the city's working to get information and education and that will be pushed down to you as time comes. But so if folks ask you, just know that it's, it's brand new to us. Um, uh, city council is, is working on it. Thanks.
Anything else? Hearing nothing, um, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move for adjourned in a second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Meeting adjourned.